Good evening, everybody. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for October 28th, 2021, beginning at 7:25 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. Thank you all for joining us here tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions for those around you. And now, if you would please, join me in a moment of silence. So the first item on our agenda is Public Hearing A. Schools First: State Financial Accountability Rating. So next, we will open our public hearing on Schools First, the State Financial Accountability Rating System. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And the Texas Education Agency has released its 2021 Financial Accountability Ratings for all Texas school districts. State law requires that each district hold a public hearing to discuss its rating and to invite public comment on the rating. Alice Amrick, Executive Director of Finance, will present a report on our financial accountability rating. Following her report, it would be appropriate to invite any public comment on this rating. Ms. Amrick.
Thank you, President Mays, Board members, and Dr. Cavassos. As you know, Schools First is the financial accountability rating system used by the Texas Education Agency. It holds school districts accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. It is designed to encourage school districts to provide the maximum allocation for direct instruction, and it highlights and discloses the quality of their financial management decisions. I apologize, I should have advanced that slide. This is the 19th year that ratings have been assigned under the Schools First system. I am pleased to announce that Arlington ISD has received a Schools First rating of A, Superior Achievement, for 2021. This is the highest rating that can be awarded, and it is the same rating that the district received last year and the year before that. And if you look even further back, AISD has received the highest rating in all years that this has been issued. A little background, this was authorized in 1999 and updated in 2013. The commissioner must evaluate the system at least every three years. The 2021 rating is based on audited financial data from the 1920 school year. This year's rating included a score on 19 indicators. These indicators assess the district's data in a variety of areas, including staff-to-student ratios, accuracy of projections, compliance with reporting requirements, and financial The rating system is based on letter grades and incorporates four possible ratings, A through F. This chart shows the ranges of the points required to receive the letter grade ratings. The scale has collapsed over time, and they've raised the score that you have to get to get the higher ratings over time. As Dr. Cavassos just mentioned, under the Schools First system, we're required to hold a public hearing to discuss the results. The hearing was advertised in the newspaper as required. We're also required to issue a financial management report that includes certain transactions for Board members and the superintendent. We have copies of that report available at the reception desk out front for any members of the public who would like it, and the report will also be available on the district's At this time, I will be happy to answer any questions, and it would be appropriate at this time to invite public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hamrick. Just confirming, do we have any speakers this evening?
Not for this portion of the meeting, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. So we have no registered speakers for the public hearing. The public hearing on Schools First, the State Financial Accountability Rating, is now closed. Once again, thank you very much. Superior rating continued for financial accountability here in AISD is a very good thing. We're very proud, and the consistency of the rating, I think, speaks volumes to the district and the way that they handle finances. I would encourage anyone who is interested. It is full transparency. You can go on our website and see the review, as well as the TEA website. Okay, now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakersRequest, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
We have one requester for agenda items, Ms. Cindy Calaluka.
Okay.
She, I believe she's virtual.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Calaluka, welcome. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum, and you will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. Okay, Ms. Calaluka, you can begin.
Good evening, President Mays, school board members, Dr. Cavassos, and everyone present, in person or virtually. First, I want to thank you for opening the conversation about fixing our report cards. This has the potential to benefit everyone involved, parents, students, and teachers. Second, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you increasing pay for teachers, aides, and substitutes. This lets us know that we're valued, and it helps us to meet our financial needs. Thirdly, I continue my pleas for you to keep it simple. We were stressed out and overwhelmed before COVID. Now, we're dropping like flies, students and teachers alike. I urge you, I beg of you, take everything that is not state-manded off our plates and use all available resources and personnel to instruct and tutor our students. Our mission in AISD is to empower and engage all students to be contributing responsible citizens striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. This cannot happen when teachers don't have the time to plan these learning experiences and when students are not given the time they need to master the skills. It can't happen when all the good teachers are leaving, and we can't keep the new ones. Less is more. Less training, less coaching, less paperwork, more innovative, relevant, rigorous learning experiences. Test scores are going to be lousy for some time now. Do we want miserable students who hate school and lousy scores, or happy students who love learning?
Thank you, Ms. Calaluka. Your time is extended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, next on our agenda are our action items. We have two action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And action item A is to consider approving a resolution and Texas Association of Realtors' Commercial Contract for Improved Property, as described in our agenda.
Mrs. Fowler?
President Mays, thank you. I make a motion that we move to approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of real property locally known as 1221 East Division Street, Arlington, Texas.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Chapa. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six present vote in the affirmative, motion passes. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And the next item is to consider a resolution for the development of a local innovation plan for District of Innovation designation. And I'll ask Dr. Wertz to take us through that request. So, Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. As you know, we are currently designated as a District of Innovation, and it's time for renewal. And so tonight, I'm here to share a little bit about what District of Innovation means and the process that we're proposing that we go through. In 2016, on February 16th, the AISD adopted a local innovation plan and became designated as a District of Innovation. And so what is a District of Innovation? It's actually connected to a law that was passed in the 84th Legislative Session by the House, called House Bill 1842, and it created a chapter in the Education Code, Chapter 12A, that provided traditional districts with opportunities that were usually afforded to charters and to, that allowed us to have similar flexibilities. It is a plan that's connected to the local innovation plan and must be renewed every five years. So why would we consider remaining a District of Innovation? Well, what it does is it does allow us to have a little bit more local control by allowing ourselves the opportunity to be exempt from specific pieces of legislation, and it also helps ensure that we have some continuity in some of the specialized programs that we do offer students. There are a list of potential legal exemptions that a district can embed in their local innovation plan by statute. And in front of you, you see a bullet of many things that you could potentially include in your local innovation plan. Not all of them are currently in ours, and not all of them are ones that we would even recommend pursuing. But in, for sake of transparency, these are eligible things that you could pursue, should that be a decision, as part of the statute. There are two eligibility requirements for a district to be designated as a District of Innovation. One is you must maintain an acceptable academic rating, and that rating is A, B, or C. And if a district, for example, loses that rating for two consecutive years or has a less than satisfactory rating in the financial area for two consecutive years, the commissioner can remove your designation. Also, the District of Innovation Plan must be adopted following a specific prescribed protocol that's outlined in the statute. So what are some requirements? If a local innovation plan is adopted, it must identify in the plan itself which specific provisions the district is seeking in exemption and provide a comprehensive educational program that includes many different components that you could include in the innovations. And you can see in front of you a list of bullets, which include curriculum, methodology that's used to deliver instruction, how campuses govern, budget, local accountability, all those things can be outlined. Other things to consider is a plan that's adopted can be amended, it can be changed or rescinded at any time by a majority vote. You're only allowed to have one local innovation plan at a time. The public, for, when it comes to policy impact, there may be some policies that are our local policies or legal policies that we would have to adjust if you applied exemptions for rule, if you applied for exemptions or included exemptions in your local innovation plan that are currently in statute. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, there are some rules around which the commissioner can terminate your local innovation plan. It's really connected to unacceptable ratings on either academics or finances for two consecutive years. So as we think about this, the possibility of designing a local innovation plan here in Arlington, the goal would be to ensure that there is alignment between this current strategic plan that's being designed, the Texas Education Code, so that we're working in sync. And so, as you know, we're, there's a process right now. We're in the middle of preparing a strategic plan, which will come to you for consideration in December. But as we're working through that process, there are, there are things we can already see in terms of drafts. And so what we intend to do is to look at the strategic plan as it's being designed. What are some things we know are coming up or being elevated? Which parts in the Education Code, if we include it as an exemption, the local innovation plan would actually accelerate some of that work? That's what we're trying to do, not just exempt from anything, but exempt ourselves from things that would allow us to accelerate our work and then embed those into a local innovation plan, which would be presented to you all for consideration. This is a list of the six current exemptions that we have in our local innovation plan this year. Many of these, some of these have more significant impact on the way we do business and others very minor. For example, a minor impact point, I would say, for example, is number five, which is really about having the ability to go beyond a two-year term contract for a depository bank contract. One that has a more significant place that you might see more regularly is our ability to start school before the fourth Monday of every August. By statute, you're not allowed to, but you can if you have any exemption. If we choose to, if the board chooses to go through this process, this is the proposed timeline. Basically, this evening, there's an opportunity to consider a resolution, to hold a public hearing, and then as a board to make a decision about whether you would like to appoint a committee and initiate that process on our end. If you choose to do that, then we will begin the process of gathering that committee, working through the design of the local innovation plan, which we would bring, we would actually post. It would be approved by the DIDC through a public meeting, and it would be posted online for 30 days for the public to view and give feedback on, and we would bring it to the board on the 13th of January for a consideration, which has to be passed by a two-thirds vote. So our recommendation is that the Board of Trustees consider, or we recommend the adoption of a resolution to initiate the process under the Texas Education Code, Chapter 12A, to become a District of Innovation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any questions and/or comments by any of my trustees, colleagues, my trustees? Okay, I do not see any questions. Mrs. McMura?
President Mays, I move to adopt the following resolution to initiate the process under the Texas Education Code, Chapter 12A, to become a District of Innovation. And here's the resolution. Resolution of the Board Regarding District of Innovation. Whereas, Texas Education Code, Section 12A.001, et cec, provides that a district is eligible for designation as a District of Innovation if the district's most recent performance rating under the Texas Education Code, Section 39.054, reflects at least acceptable performance. And that consideration of the designation as a District of Innovation may be initiation by a resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees of this district. And whereas, the Arlington Independent School District's most recent performance rating under the Texas Education Code, Section 39.054, reflects at least acceptable performance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Texas, that the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District, by adoption of this resolution, initiates the process under Texas Education Code, 12A.001, et cec, to become a District of Innovation. Be it further resolved that after this resolution is signed by the board, a public hearing shall be held to consider whether the district should develop a local innovation plan for the designation of the district as a District of Innovation, and that after the public hearing of the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District, shall comply with all procedural requirements under the Texas Education Code, Chapter 12A, including appointing a committee to develop a local innovation plan or decline to pursue designation as a District of Innovation.
Thank you, Mrs. McMura. Do I have a second?
A second.
So I've got a motion by Mrs. McMura, a second by Mr. Willbanks. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative, and motion passes. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our public hearing. We will now open our public hearing on the development of local innovation plan for District of Innovation designation. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any registered speakers?
Not for this public hearing, President Mays.
Thank you. So we have no registered speakers, so the public hearing on development of local innovation plan for District of Innovation designation is now closed. Next item on our agenda is an action item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this action item is consistent with our just recent discussion, to consider a decline to develop a local innovation plan for District of Innovation or to appoint a committee to develop the local innovation plan for the District of Innovation designation. Dr. Wertz?
So as, since the resolution was passed, we have an opportunity now to form a committee under your direction, and we provided you a list of names of people that we have nominated as, for conclusion on that committee, and before you is a list of roles. So we have invited parents, some community representatives, representatives from each of the three teacher organizations that are here in Arlington, including teachers, principals, and members of district leadership. The names you have before you are everyone who has RSVP'd to participate, should you appoint that committee. And then we have a few outstanding names that are waiting for their confirmation, they could attend in the process, should you adopt this committee or appoint the committee. Our recommendation is that the board appoint the committee as presented to develop the local innovation plan in accordance with Section 12A.003 of the Texas Education Code.
Thank you again, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any questions, comments, motions from my colleagues? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I do have a motion. At this time, I move to appoint the committee as presented. An additional individuals is needed to complete the committee to develop a local innovation plan in accordance with Section 12A.003 of the Texas Education Code.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative, the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Okay, next on our agenda is our discussion action item, COVID-19 School Operations Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, as we have for a number of board meetings, we bring a brief COVID-19 School Operations Update. Tonight, Dr. Brown will be subbing for Dr. Hill, so don't get used to her doing this part of the presentation, as she did last year.
Y'all missed me, that's it.
So she'll be doing this presentation, Dr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. We do have a brief School Operations Update for you this evening. And just a quick overview, we'll talk about vaccine testing and mitigation efforts, just conditions in our current county in terms of our dashboard, our AISD dashboard trends, our testing center data information for our rapid testing, as well as provide a brief update on virtual school update and our remote learning. That will be our brief overview today. So as relates to our vaccine mitigation efforts, we just continue to share that the Arlington Fire Department does offer their vaccine clinic. No appointment is necessary. That's nine to four, Monday through Friday. So we just continue to encourage people to take advantage of that if they are looking for a spot to get vaccinated. We're currently working with the city and the county to partner with us, potentially to provide a vaccine opportunity for five to 11-year-olds. Once that vaccine receives full approval, we'll be continuing those conversations to see if we're able to partner to provide an opportunity for our students here in Arlington. For testing mitigation effort, we are continuing to share information about our county drive-through testing site that is for a PCR test. That's at our athletics complex on Division. That's from nine to seven PM. We have looked at that just, again, we've revised it a little bit, so we're just doing it on Tuesdays from nine to seven. And so just as far, information that we have so far through October 23rd, 500 tests have been administered, 427. There was no virus detected, 49 detected, and you'll see the results for inconclusive, or if we weren't able to get enough specimen to be able to provide an accurate testing information. We're continuing with our rapid testing over at our testing clinic, and that's at the New York Avenue location. That's still Monday through Friday, nine to two PM. We continue to just thank our nurses and our staff, who's providing those opportunities for our students and for our staff members as well. And through the 26th of October, we've administered a little over 1,450 tests. 11% of those were positive, and almost 90% of those tests were negative. Other mitigation efforts, we continue to continue to strongly encourage students and staff to wear masks, continuing to require symptomatic individuals, if you're ill, to stay home, and of course, to get tested. Well, now to share a brief update on our Tarrant County COVID data from the dashboard. The spread in our community is still considered high, and we do have some encouraging information as it relates to the data from that dashboard. So as of October 24th, that moving day average positivity rate is, excuse me, is down to 11.59%. So that's certainly positive. The virus spread as of the 23rd was about 2,900 cases, and that also is trending downward. When you look at the COVID-like illness, seven-day moving average, that's trending downward at about 3%. COVID hospitalizations are also trending downward, and they're at about 7.6% in our As it relates to our COVID dashboard for our district, we have a little over 3,500 total positive cases that have been reported. Most of those have been students, over 3,000 of those, 500 staff members, and a few visitors also have reported positive cases. We do have more detailed information on that dashboard that's updated every, updated each day by 5:00 PM, and you could look at school and campus, campus or department-specific if you need information about specific campuses or locations. So here's just an overall picture of our trends for our COVID-19 dashboard since the beginning of the year, and you can continue to see that those cases are declining, and we just hope that they continue to decline because that certainly is good news for our community and of course, for our students and staff. Those are all things COVID. So now we'll talk about our virtual school update. We're continuing to monitor our virtual schooling programming. Second six weeks ends on Friday. We currently have about 1,000, a little over 1,000 students who are currently enrolled in virtual learning. Our third six weeks does begin on Monday, which is November 1st. We currently have about 927 students who are expecting. So we did survey our parents who were currently enrolled in virtual learning, or students who were, to find out if they wanted to continue to enroll in our program for the third six weeks. We've had a little over 100 who've opted out so far. We typically still see parents who continue to pull them out. We'll still see more of that next week, so we'll have a more, a better update when we come back in November for our board meeting. All right, so that is our brief update. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. Thank you very much, Dr. Brown. Do I have any colleagues with questions? Okay, I see none. Thank you, Dr. Brown. I just want to say that I hope that we all continue to think about and pray for those who have been directly impacted by this virus. We did note that there still is a high spread, so I once again applaud the district for allowing places for people to get testing for our students, staff, and their families. So thank you very much for this report. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent agenda. So this consists of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. So trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move the approval.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mrs. McMura. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, all present vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Motion passes. So we now move on to our discussion item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring an update of our progress monitoring, and this seems a quick turnaround, which it is. We adopted a progress monitoring calendar. We've had a lot of great calibration with the board around the goals, and so very pleased with our effort thus far in terms of getting on this calibrated cycle of reporting back to the board and things like that, our results. So tonight, we have HB3 district improvement plan results, and so Dr. Wertz will take us through that, and also we'll offer some information about some of the response to these results. And it's, it's a snapshot really on the response because there's a very large kind of response throughout the entire year. We want to just bring a snapshot when we can about the results that we're going to present. So, Dr. Wertz?
Right. Good evening, again, President Mays, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, thank you for letting us come before you today to share with you some progress that we're making as we inch towards our outcome goals for the year. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned, I'll be joined by both, actually, Dr. Brown and Dr. Lopez. We'll share with you where we are in terms of how we're inching towards our progress and around House Bill III goals. Tonight, I'll specifically be talking about kindergarten, and then we'll also share with you our outcomes related to STAR scores for our curriculum assessments, the first round of curriculum assessments that we've given so far in this school year. And Dr. Lopez will share a little bit about how we're using that data to project, kind of where we might end up if we keep on this track, and also, Dr. Brown, about how schools are processing data to take action. So the first thing I wanted to highlight was just what we're, what we're talking about tonight in terms of the overview when it comes to House Bill III. As you know, from House Bill III, it's really designed to ensure that third-grade students are reading and on grade level and that their math is on, on grade level. But you can't really look at third grade alone. You have to really consider all the different grade levels that are in front of them and how they're going to progress as they matriculate into future grades. So we look at literacy and math progress for both kinder, first, second, and third grade. Tonight, last time I was here, I shared with you information about first and second grade. Tonight, I'm going to highlight kindergarten specifically and then third grade. So the first goal, and this actually should say goal one, is kindergarten literacy for progress. So here, our kindergarten students participated in the same assessment that first grade and second grade participated in, which was M-class. And as you can see, our goal is to move from 51% to 75% over the time of our, of our, of our goal setting. And on the left-hand side, you'll notice pie charts, which kind of break down the four different categories, meaning students that are above the benchmark, at the benchmark, below the benchmark, and well below the benchmark. The important thing to note about this is our goal over time is to eventually equate these towards third grade. So what we do want to do, we want to be able to get to over time, is to be able to utilize how students are progressing in M-class to project how they would perform on third grade so that we can make pivots along the way to ensure that they're actually reading the Meets and Masters levels when they get there. Currently, we assessed our kindergarten students between October 1st and October 29th. You note today is October 28th. Tomorrow is the actual close. We're sharing this with you because we're pretty much done. Usually, there's like a few straggling students to be assessed, but not enough that's really going to impact scores, so we feel confident enough to share them with you this evening. But you'll notice that for kindergarten right now, we have about 17% that are below benchmark and 33% well below, and the other group, which is about half of them, are at or above benchmark. This is pretty consistent to what we've seen in the past. You're going to notice that when it comes to kindergarten, they tend to perform a little bit better than what you saw in the first and second grade. And the reason why I want to highlight that is because these students haven't been out of school, haven't missed as much content as first and second graders have. And so when we measure progress for first and second graders, we're measuring where they should be by their age group at that period of time. And so when you saw the scores before for first and second grade, you would naturally expect them to be further behind because they are older, and so if they're reading at much lower levels, that's going to show much more up in their data, whereas kindergarten, they're still learning basics of reading. When it comes to third-grade reading, our target is to go from 57 to 74 over the five-year period, and our baseline this year is 57, and our goal this year is 61%. And as you can see from CA1 for third grade, we're sitting at 55%. And you can literally go down, you can go down each one of those subgroups, and you'll see where their targets are and where we're landing when it comes to CA1 for third grade. Our second goal is kindergarten math and progress measures for CA1 in third grade. And so you'll notice here, again, the pie chart on the left-hand side, our goals are to move it from 47 to 70. And as you can see here, this math is significantly a challenge even in kindergarten, which has been the persistent issue across really all of our grade levels, and kindergarten has really not been the exception. Third grade, as you can see here, is math again, our all-student group. Our, our goal this year is to get to 52, and we're currently sitting at 43. So we're hovering actually a little below our baseline from last year. We also wanted to report out some of the vitals that we discussed earlier when it comes to the district improvement plan because we have measured them in the CAs. And our goal, of course, is that 100% of our students graduate exceptionally prepared, and exceptional preparedness also includes your understanding and mastery of academic skills. So our overall district goal is to move students from 61 to 79 over our five-year period in reading, and our baseline last, that we ended last year was at 61. Our goal is to move to 64, and you can see the district as a whole is moving up towards that actual target. In fact, if you'll scroll, if you'll go through the different subgroups, you'll see that in, in most cases, the sub-populations are actually improving their performance since the end of last school year and inching towards that goal. So while third grade, and this is why it's important, we look at different grade levels to, to identify where the individual needs are and where additional supports are needed. But as a system, the whole system as a whole is actually making improvement while there might be pockets of different grade levels that are still struggling, and you saw that in third-grade data. In mathematics, the goal is to go from 51 to 79. Our target baseline was 51. Our target this year is 58. You can, as you know, that's an aggressive goal. Part of the reason why that's aggressive is because we want to inch back as quickly as we can to our, where we started before the COVID slide. And so because math took the strongest hit in achievement, the effect sizes that we added to the goals are, are stronger. So here you can see in CA1, we're still behind where we want to be. We're at 49, and that trend is pretty consistent as you work your way down each of the subgroups. I'm just going to go through these because I've already showed you third grade. For eighth grade STAR reading, 67 to 86. Our baseline is 67, and our goal is 73 this year. And as you can see in reading, again, in eighth grade, we're inching up. Our overall group's sitting at 69, and we started our baseline last year at 67. So most prominent growth is happening. I also want to point out that you'll notice in the ELs, English Language Learners, there is a 10-point growth from baseline. And in our current special ed students, you'll notice that there's a, a growth there that's pretty significant. And so those are celebrations for us, considering those are student populations that tend to struggle sometimes when it comes to STAR, especially after they've been out of school for a while. In mathematics, our baseline for eighth grade is, was starting at 39. We're currently sitting at 42, so we're inching in the right direction. And as you kind of go through each of the sub-pops, you can see where some growth occurred and also where there's some stagnation. For example, in the Asian population, it's declined versus where we were in baseline, but in other places like the Hispanic population or are economically disadvantaged, or even like, again, the English language population, those groups of students are performing. The other thing that I, I want to articulate, which is intuitive, we already know this, but I just want to punctuate, is students can populate more than one of these groups at the same time, and most do. So sometimes when you see numbers around, for example, economically disadvantaged, they also usually, well, they always include themselves in another one of those groups, and sometimes it's multiple. In Algebra I, our baseline was 60, and our goal is to move to 67. Right now, we're currently sitting at 58. I want to remind, this cohort of students is, are the eighth-grade math students that we were testing last year that saw the significant drop from the 80s to 30s. So we're really keeping our eyes on this cohort of students specifically because we already know they're going into ninth grade with the deficits that we could clearly see in the eighth-grade math. English I, 63 is our baseline. Our goal is actually 64, and we're already exceeding it right now, 67, so we may be outpacing what our goal initially started at. This is English II. And what I'd like to do now is I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lopez for a few minutes, and she's going to go over the overall accountability rating, how this information that you just saw in terms of CA1 is projected into this outcome. I want to highlight the screeners that we share with you are not, don't, do not impact what you're about to see. It's only STAR so, results as you know, which is CA1, so.
President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you. I gave a very long overview of accountability just a little while ago, so just this is a little bit of a refre, it won't be that long. This is a one-slide refresher. So what we've done is we, we take the curriculum assessments, and there's an equipercentile equating process that, that occurs between the curriculum assessments and STAR. And so that's how we are able to obtain performance levels and scale scores, et cetera. So that data is used at, at the different levels in different ways. So what I'm going to show and just kind of discuss with y'all is how that data is put into the accountability system as if it was the actual STAR assessment. So what we have, what we do is we run an accountability package. We've worked with, well, I wouldn't say we've worked with, but we pestered DEA's programmers quite a bit over the course of the years, just kind of fine-tuning and making sure that we had all of the rules kind of accounted for and in our own system. There are some things that we, we're just not going to be able to pull into our, our own. An example of that is former sped. So we don't know if a student was former sped if they come from another district. We know if they're former sped if they are continuously enrolled in AISD. So that's just one of the things that, you know, it's, it's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be exactly matching up to the accountability system. So, but it's very, very close. So when we input our CA1 scores, we have the following scaled scores. So for Domain I, at the district level, if you'll recall, those CA1 scores are going to be weighted 40% of the domain, that's what, that component of Domain I. So our CA1 scores, that they get weighted 40%. The next area is our graduates, our percentage of graduates from prior year. What we currently have is our 2020 class. Our 2021 class, we have not received the data for, I can't recall if it was up to September 1st for the cutoff for that, but we like to use the released data from, from DEA, so we currently have the 2020 class. And then the, the remaining percentage is CCMR. And I'm so sorry, I said, I misspoke there. 40% is CCMR. We have our 2021 graduates approximations in their own internal approximations. I apologize. I spoke about graduation, and that's the 20%, and that's the 2020 class currently. So let me clarify, walk you through that one more time. CA1, 40%. CCMR, our 2021 class, our own internal approximation, 40%. And then our 2020 graduating class is 20%. So when we put all of that through and we calculate Domain I, we land on a scale score of a 66. II-A is the next domain. That's academic growth, so that's going to be your reading and math tests. You only are going to have students who had a prior year score. So if a student did not test in 2021 spring, then they're not going to go into the denominator, and then they're obviously not going to go into the numerator either, so don't have data on them. If they test in another district, we have that information. So it's not whether they test with us or not, but if they didn't test, then we don't have anything to compare back to. So the sum of those growth points divided by the eligible, we scale that, and that is a 57. II-A is a little tricky, kind of at this point in time, because for CA1, our tests have maybe half of the amount of items as the actual STAR and EOC test would have. So when you have less items, you actually increase the difference in the scale score as you move from one raw score to the next. So it makes the target that they're trying to hit a little bit more difficult when they're increasing by 100 scale score points. So they might only need 50. If they don't get it, it's because they have a wider gap in between those items. So that one's always just a little bit trickier during, for CA1. For II-B, that's relative performance, and so that's going to be, for the district, that's going to be your STAR and your CCMR, raw score, put onto a relative performance. So you look at your socioeconomic status. And so when we take our STAR, well, in this case, CA1, and our CCMR, and we scale that, we land at a 73 scaled score. And then the final piece is our Domain III, closing the gaps. There's four components there, and for the district, that's academic achievement and reading and math. That's going to be your students that are at the Meets and Masters level. Then there is graduation. There is Tellpass, and then there is CCMR. So currently for Tellpass, we use what we had in 2020 spring. We don't have a Tellpass CA that we use throughout the year. So that one's set. Our graduation is from our 2020 class, and then our CCMR is from our 2021 class. So those three components are pretty much locked in. They don't change much from CA1 to CA2 to benchmark. And so when we input our CA1 scores into that main, that 50% component, that academic achievement, and scale that out, we, we land on a 69. So if you'll recall, we take the better of I, II-A, and II-B, and then we scale, I'm sorry, we weight that 70%. So in this case, II-B is the better of I, II-A, and II-B. That 73 is going to get multiplied by 70%, and then that 69, there's, that's always going in. That Domain III always goes in, and that's 30%. So that gives us an overall grade of a 72 if CA1 was the actual STAR. So at this point in time, if we ran it through the system, that's what we would land on. Questions on any of that?
I think we're going to go to Herman first.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
I'm glad I don't have that part. But what we can talk about is the response to the data. And so as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, throughout the year, we are leveraging many different types of strategies and supports for campuses, for teachers, and leaders to be able to respond to the data in a meaningful way. And so today, we're just going to highlight a few ways that the campuses have done an outstanding job of responding to the data. So we're highlighting four areas today. One is around tiered support, and not just for teachers, but also for campus leaders and how that looks from the Office of School Leadership. The engagement of Data Talks, lesson alignment and formative assessment for many of our campuses, especially those in the Strategic Support Network. If you recall, those are our schools who are currently in school improvement from the 2018-19 school year that continues to carry over. And the final one, as you know, we're focusing on four best practices in our system, and so how we are supporting teachers in the implementation of the best practices. So as relates to tiered support, as you know, we have executive directors who spend quite a bit of time on campuses, really every one to two weeks, visiting campuses, supporting instructional leadership teams to make sure they are focusing on the right, the highest-leveraged strategies to be able to move the needle on the data. Those teacher data meetings led by the principals and instructional leadership teams, ensuring that there are solid instructional action plans that are developed as a result of the data, ensuring that we have the right students in small groups and focusing on the right data pieces. And the last one is tiered support for teachers. So just ensuring, you know, we have teachers who are at different levels of, of So just ensuring, you know, we have teachers who are at different levels of need, some who are, you know, extremely proficient, who've done this for a long time, who don't need a lot of support in these areas, and some who are newer teachers or who may have stronger need, making sure we're having side-by-side planning or modeling or additional coaching for those specific teachers around the data as we have that by teacher and by student. Because we are all about the data, the data talks, and so student goal tracking, and so making sure our students know where they are, and that they have an ownership in the process of their progress towards their goals as well. And so many of our campuses have really strengthened their student goal-tracking systems, where kids really are owning that process, which is really powerful. And you all know, as a system, we focused on data-driven instructional practices, and so we're continuing our partnership with Region 11, with the facilitation of our EDs and ensuring that during our PLCs, we're having solid data conversations that are rich, and we're able to have concrete action plans as a result. And then the instructional action plans, really how we're responding to the data by student by need, which we know is an incredible feat, but our teachers are doing an outstanding job of drilling down deep to be able to find ways to reach those kids to continue the support of their unfinished learning. Specifically for the Strategic Support Network, again, these are the schools in school improvement. That's a picture of our school improvement team. That's our instructional facilitators, our director and coordinator of school improvement. These particular campuses are all supported by Region 11 and a coach with Region 11 to really help support and strengthen their lesson alignment and formative assessment processes. Our executive directors also are receiving coaching from Region 11 around the data-driven instructional practices, just to ensure that everyone has a coach in supporting this data process. This SSN campuses work continuing to monitor their targeted improvement plans. They still have to write those plans, as you are aware, and making sure they're still focused on their quarterly goals, and they are making progress towards those goals as well. And then, of course, our school improvement team support primarily. They do support the SSN, however, they do support other campuses that have more needs as well. Our SSN campuses are being supported by the instructional facilitators with priority standards planning sessions. These are optional for our teachers and our instructional coaches to be able to help sure they're focusing on the highest leverage teaks to accelerate instruction where we, our kids need it specifically the most. And then the best practices, as you are aware, we do have our E2L coaching. So our reading and math teachers across the district are engaged in our E2L coaching. Principal triad watts, making sure that principals are supporting each other in their own learning and understanding and calibration around best practices, visiting each other's campuses to see inaction, and then just really help each other problem-solve ways they can continue to strengthen that instructional, those instructional processes. The executive directors continue to support principals through their learning community meetings, making sure those are really instructionally focused, meetings they have with their executive directors and their peers, and I've already referenced our instructional facilitators who continue to support through professional learning communities, data meetings, and also offering resources to our teachers in their execution of data-driven instructional practices. And those, a few items I would just like to highlight as our response to the data. Again, we continue to monitor, to make adjustments, and to make sure that we're pushing out the resources that we need to our campuses as best as possible as we get information from them about their needs. So we are happy to take any questions now.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, Dr. Wertz, and Dr. Lopez. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Dr. Brown, Dr. Wertz, and Lopez. You know, I guess I'll start with you since you finished up, and I just have a comment for you, and I think, you know, we're blessed in this district to kind of have the kind of game plan that we do with the Strategic Support Network and preaching those best practices. And I really like where we're heading as a board, too, because it's all about the DDI, using data-driven instruction to drive course correction. And we, as a board, have met recently, and I think we're modeling that DDI concept at the top-down. I think that's really important to drive that message to the whole organization that we, as a board, are trying to do the same thing that there, we're requiring them to do. And I'm really proud of where we're seeing this, because that is a best practice, that is a high-lever strategy to move the needle on student outcomes, and we know we need all the help we can get right now. So again, thank you, and thank you to the team for all the hard work that they've been doing. So that being said, I'd like to kind of go back, and I guess let's start with Dr. Wertz and go back to the top of the presentation. So yeah, this is great that we're getting to look at some of the screener data again, and also now the first CA. And, you know, my question to you is, you know, just kind of keep it broad. This is kind of the first time we're digesting it, and I'm seeing there's a lot to be encouraged with here. And I think if I was to ask you to bottom-line it in terms of, well, actually, maybe it's better we just kind of go slide by slide, you know, or quickly go through the slides I've marked. On the kindergarten literacy, the screener data, again, that's mainly looking at phonemic awareness correctly, correct me if I'm wrong. How big, this early on in the process, how correlated is outcome on that going to be? Kind of giving us an early indicator of where we're heading for our third-grade reading goal?
We actually cannot answer that question right now, because the screener is new. So that's an equating process that will actually take three years to do completely for all grade levels by the time this cohort gets to three. So what we'll do is, at the end of this year, we'll have an endpoint, and we'll be able to look at third grade's results, and we'll be able to start that process. But it really is going to take some time, because you basically need to get to a place where the students who are in kindergarten taking the assessment also take the third-grade assessment. You see the relationship between those things and the cohorts. It takes years to get there. We were already there when it came to I Station. What we can do is start the process at the end of the year by looking at end-of-year, but not necessarily get to a place where we're able to equate all the way to third grade. That's going to be a year-by-year-by-year process for the next few years, unfortunately.
Yeah, so I guess the better thing to look at, at the early grades, is kind of what we know with the screener data, and is there anything that kind of leaps out at you as kind of bright spots in terms of what we're seeing, both on the literacy and, I guess we didn't do the math, but the literacy results that we have so far?
Letter naming, rapid letter naming is the thing that we pay, that I would say is probably more of a bright spot. You see that, that's the main thing that we pay attention to primarily in pre-K. Word study and phonemic awareness and those type of things are still our challenge areas. One of the things that we've talked about, too, is we've, as part of House Bill III, there is a requirement that you have a systemic phonics instruction that's provided every day. We purchased a new phonics program, actually, we purchased it before this year, prior to COVID, and students receive that now every day for thirty minutes, and it's embedded into our curriculum documents for teachers to leverage when they're teaching, to help with those things. Our scores ironically are not a lot different with kindergarten this year than they were prior to COVID. They kind of sit about the same.
This early on.
Yeah, they do, actually. We actually had this conversation even this evening. First and second grader are where we're seeing the biggest dip, but it's kind of intuitive when you think about it, because the number of years that they've been away from school just aren't there. And the volume of students that don't go to pre-K, that show for Kinder versus those that went to pre-K, there's some similarities there. I suspect, my hope is that as we get more volumes of students in full-day pre-K, you're going to see these numbers start to trend differently when school starts, because they will know their letters, they'll know their sounds and things like that before they get here. But right now, the data doesn't look really different prior to COVID when it comes to Kinder.
Yeah, and I had to go up a slide or two for the numeracy. And the same thing you would say for the numeracy results from the screener data kindergarten. I am concerned about the sixty percent below, that seems large. Is that, but is that still on?
I didn't, we didn't talk specifically about a comparison for numeracy that I can bring to you today about the comparison prior to COVID. We did do that for literacy, but I don't have that data for math.
So what, you know, as, at a board level, kind of help us out here, you know, from this early snapshot, what's the, you know, if you were to kind of summarize the takeaway from the kindergarten screener data, it's that, hey, we?
We're kind of on track. We're on track. I think MOY will give us a better sense about where we are, because then we can compare to where, how they're progressing this first semester to what students would typically do in Semester One, when they didn't come with deficits that were generated during a specialized circumstance like COVID. It's really hard at the beginning of the year with Kinder, in my opinion, because they're learning how to just do school.
Yeah.
So the idea that you're assessing them, so if you want to really think about it, even in October, like, these are students who are just really learning how to do school. So it's a little different, I think, for Kinder, but I would, right now, the feeling is we're kind of on track in terms of where we normally typically land at this time of year with kindergarten.
And, you know, what I'm hopeful of, and what I'm optimistic of, is just that experience of just that being in school, is that we're going to start seeing an acceleration of results. I'm hopeful of that, and I don't know if you've seen indicators of that, but just having the kids back in that normalcy and doing the strategies that we're doing for acceleration, we're going to see a bigger-than-normal jump between this benchmark and these early results to the next snapshot. So having said that, you know, moving on to the actual CA, there are some bright spots in our CA, and I noticed that on a number of the snapshots you provided, that our Echo Dis students are actually outperforming what, you know, are showing gains, which, you know, that's a difficult group to kind of move the needle on. And overall, I'll ask you the same question. I mean, there are some bright spots, but as, you know, from a trustee perspective, what's the, what's the big takeaway we should take from this? Other, you know, are we on track? Are there red flags that we need to, again, as I mentioned to Dr. Brown, using data to inform our actions and to correct course? Are there, you know, where, what's the big takeaway? And are there any areas that you think we need to start making corrections, or doing more of, or less of?
I would not say, I think we're on track. I think what you're going to see, the positive thing, there's two points that I would say. One is, and I'll start with reading, is you do see growth. You see progress happening towards the goal we're getting to in most cases, and sometimes you'll see that even more significant growth in the populations that tend to have the most challenges, specifically not only economically disadvantaged, but English-language learners who are actually taking assessments in the English language, or special education students. So those, in my mind, are wins. While mathematics is not, you're not seeing tons of growth, it's kind of standing right about where we are. So I, the part, the reason why I don't feel too surprised by it is because it's not like we had a baseline in spring, and when we took a CA I in fall, you saw a major fall. We're either a little bit better, or if we're worse, we're just, it's a couple of points here and there. When it comes to strategies, I would not recommend that there's any course change yet, because this is the very beginning. This is almost like the very first dipstick. And one of the challenges, I think, that happens in education all the time, and if you ask any teacher, this is very pervasive, is people tend to swing really quickly from strategy to strategy, trying to find the magic bullet, and you have to let things take root. So all of these things that Dr. Brown has been sharing, the best practices that we're coaching in, teachers' training, this is the time to let that sink in and take root in the classroom, practice the practices that we're teaching, let students engage in the learning in the way that we're teaching them, and then see if the numbers start to improve over time. So I don't have any recommendations on course changes. I think when we get to CA II, it'll be interesting to see where the trajectory starts to go, and then start to ask those questions. But to be honest, our strategies are designed to be ones that are robust, they're not quick wins. So if you'll think, for example, around the coaching or the mastery around the best practice, teachers need time to implement and to try it out with students and make mistakes along the way. You're not even, as a teacher professional, going to do it right the first time. You got to practice, just like you would in any other profession. I think this year is going to be really a year to watch those things take root. Doesn't suggest that you don't make some adjustments along the way, but I think it would be, I would be hesitant in making a recommendation to start shifting strategies until we give the system a chance to see how it's going to react to them.
No, I agree. I agree. Again, thank you for this, and my next questions are going to be?
Dr. Lopez?
For Dr. Lopez.
Yes, sir.
So on the first slide, on the one where you predicted our growth, if you could pull that up? And thanks for explaining this, by the way. One of the things you did mention is, on the Domain Two A, you indicated, you know, this early on, it's problematic, because you have to extrapolate out, or you normalize that up to a full score. Correct? Is that what you meant?
Well, the issue is the differences between the scale scores associated with the raw scores on the test. And so you have a larger range from one question to the next, which, which makes the probability of hitting the growth that you need for the scale score a little bit harder, because the range is larger, but from one item to the next. That there's nothing to do about that unless you want to add more questions on to the test, that would solve that, but we don't tend to, we keep the CA I, we kind of keep that smaller than CA II, and then benchmark. The assessment grows, the number of items grow with the assessment as the year progresses, because then we do bring in, spiral in, questions for cumulatively.
Okay, gotcha. I was thinking, I kind of misunderstood you the first time, and I was wondering if we could do some sort of statistical analysis and past data to come up with a weight that better corrected for that, and give us a more accurate predictor of what it would be like on the STAR. So doing that kind of past statistical analysis, come up with a scaling or weight factor to kind of do that correction is not, or desensitize that, is that not doable?
That's so funny that you mention that, because we have absolutely done that for a couple of years now. And so we, it's like, Two A just drives us nuts, because we've tried to do that exact thing. So there's not, from what we've done, there hasn't been any correction, because that's definitely something that is an approach for different methods. But for this one, there's just, it's really about, it's really about error and measurement error.
Yeah.
And so?
And the volatility.
Very, it's really tough to control.
Small number of questions.
Yeah, it's really tough to control that.
Is that accurate? It's the volatility of the small number of questions?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then, then you're extracting that out to a full-year result, and so that swing there is going to be even wider, right? Is that the?
So when you get to an assessment that has more items, you shrink the difference from the scale score from one question to the next.
Yeah.
So I'm asked more questions, and the scale score, the difference between maybe a raw score of twelve to a thirteen, that range may be only thirty points compared to a CA I, where the scale score difference from question twelve to thirteen is a hundred, a hundred and fifty even. It's, there's not really a way to, there's not a way to fix that unless, well, the way to maybe help fix that would be to add more items to CA I. I know that in past years, the number of minutes that we test has come up, and so that's not a popular approach or a fix, although, I mean, it would fix some, it would not fix all. There will still be some measurement error that, that we have not been able to. that, that we, we, we have not been able to completely cure. Yeah.
Thank, no, thanks for clarifying that. My next question might be a tag team between you and Dr. Words, because I, I know it's not popular to admit this, but I know there are some campuses and some teachers who don't do the same scope and sequence across the district, so of our CAs testing what we expected them to have taught, you know, in these first few months, and they did a different scope and sequences, and those questions aren't on the test, those kids are going to score lower than they normally would, and it would net, and it would definitely not be predictive as how they would score at the last CA or, or later benchmarks, which would include the, the material that they taught that wasn't tested, that will be tested later. So, given that, is there a chance that this score is lower than what we might end up with, given that some, we do, you know, I know anecdotally, there are teachers and campuses that do switch up the scope and sequence of math, right? You know, for instance. So is that an issue, or that's something that you've already factored in? Or are you assuming everyone's teaching the same scope and sequence?
The item, the items on the test are aligned to the designated scope and sequence that's expected. So if a, if a teacher is not, I wouldn't even say intentionally straying from that scope and sequence, but maybe as you're getting kids back into school, and you're doing policies and procedures, and you fall behind, and then you didn't quite get to something, I mean, that's going to show up on your CA results, that, you know, I got, I maybe got to linear equations, but I didn't get to linear inequalities, and there was two questions on the test about linear inequalities. I didn't intentionally skip that or, or move it around. I didn't get to it. That's going to show up. Yeah.
Just want to add to that, that's okay. She's correct. But the other thing I want to just remind the audience that's maybe listening is, there's really two purposes, right, of the CA. As a system, we use it to do a dipstick to see how we're, how we're, how we're trending. But the teacher uses it in a very different way, right? The teachers really use it to try to understand how kids mastered the content they taught, and they go into the assessment knowing if there was a standard that they never, they never taught. So if I, if I was teaching the scope and sequence, for example, and I knew, gosh, I just never got to that standard. I know it's going to show up on the CA. When I use my data and do the processes, the DDI process that Dr. Brown was talking about, we're going to set that aside, and I'm going to know that I'm going to adjust for that as I move down along. It doesn't necessarily mean the campus score isn't going to look a certain way, but the principal, who's interpreting it, will know that information, and so they'll know whether they need to take action, or whether it's just a matter of teaching that concept. There's no way to solve for that completely, because the scope and sequence is designed to get students through all the content that we know, the state has already said will show up on STAR in that timely manner. But we also know that teachers have to go at a pace that's, that's meeting the needs of their students, and sometimes it will force them to slow down, which will show up on the CA, but then the principal won't necessarily be too worried about it, because they know where it's going to come back around. We just can't solve that at the system level. We just have to kind of know that that's always a factor. And if there is a school where we see results that are outliers, then we ask those kinds of questions, or, or the executive directors who are working with those principals can ask those kinds of questions just to get context, to know whether they actually need support, or whether it's just they need to catch up.
Yeah. Now, and, and, you know, I was aware from talking with campus leadership at those schools that actually do switch it up, even though through, maybe they have been given autonomy through our system before, because they've performed well in the past. But my question specifically was looking at the grade that we have right now that's predictive of where we might end up, is if that kind of stuff is factored in, if it's known or if not. And I know the first CA, that problem's going to be kind of minimized, because everyone's kind of starting with the basics, right? I assume, and that, that would be minimized as opposed to maybe a.
Well, CA2 and benchmark are cumulative, so there are items, there are things we assess in CA1 that will show up in CA2, and there are things both in CA1 and CA2 that will show up in the benchmark. And it's designed intentionally that way to see that students are retaining mastery over time.
Yeah.
But yeah, back to the original question, there just isn't a way for us to capture that as we analyze data, because it's so nuanced from classroom to classroom. Yeah.
No, thank you for that explanation. So.
You're welcome.
And again, thanks for the presentation. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. McMura.
Thank you all for the information. I had a perspective I wanted to offer about M-Class, because this is our first year using that as our primary grades assessment. I wanted, I noticed that the parent report that we get is very simple, and it even provides, on the parent report, skills needing reinforcement, and I think that's helpful, because as we saw, and as you stated, the kindergarten was kind of typical. Even on a non-COVID year, this is what, what you typically get, and I noticed that the gap is pretty wide with how students did on that assessment. So I'm grateful for that parent report, get it, being very concise and suggesting the skills needing reinforcement at home. I think that that's key. And I'm also hearing a lot of positive feedback about the M-Class assessment from primary grade teachers, and the teachers that administer the DRA assessment seeing a correlation. No big surprises, no inconsistencies with one assessment versus the other. So I'm really glad, I'm really glad that we went with M-Class. I had a question about, you could just go to any slide with subpops, even if it's, no matter what CA, I just want to look at one slide with the CA, so we can look at the different demographic categories. So looking at our sped students, I know that we are transitioning, to match with the state assessment, from paper assessments to digital platforms. When we transition to those digital platforms, will our special ed students still get their accommodations met that are expected on assessments when they take the test on the computer?
Yeah, so the, the accommodations that are legally allowed to be provided can be provided in both environments. There just has to be, as you know, opportunities for kids to practice on how to be assessed in those environments, and that's why we're embedding not only CAs, but many other tests kids can take online to get practice with that. But if it's a, if it's a, an accommodation that's allowable in STAR, it, it will be allowable in the online environment or the paper-based environment. The, the actual accommodation is not going to be something that you can't provide simply because they're taking it in one way.
Wonderful. So our, our digital platform, or a person, a, a test administrator, will be able to offer those accommodations on the platform we're going with, right?
Whatever platform you have, the students taking it in, they're going to receive the accommodation.
Wonderful. That's great to hear, because I know this is a big shift going from paper assessment to digital, especially for our elementary age students, so I just had that on my mind. And as far as teacher support goes, I know that our teachers, you know, are attending data meetings, PLCs, E2L coaching sessions, not to mention the general meetings, like ARDS, parent conferences, 504s. How are we, or how can we ensure that our teachers still have adequate time so they can plan quality instruction?
I'm going to kick that over to you, Dr. Banks. Time, that's the challenge, right? So I think a couple of things. One is just to make sure that we're doing our best to eliminate unnecessary meetings. It's going to be number one. And so I know that our principals are working to try to make sure they're trying to mitigate any additional staff meetings, trying to push out information, you know, via email, or, or if they, if they can possibly. As far as planning, doing our very best to protect those planning times. Our elementary campuses have the one or two, hopefully they got both of them by now, additional TAs to be able to push in, to support, to pull teachers out if they need to for additional planning time. Our PLC is one of the reasons why we wanted to have those SRTAs. And so that is a challenge, because we still have all this work we have to do.
Right.
But the, the amount of time that we have is finite. So trying to make sure, of course, protecting planning time and ensuring that we can push a TA in, if we can, for additional PLC planning purposes.
Right.
And then trying to do our best to minimize the number of, of meetings that are, that are not necessary at the time.
I appreciate that, and if, if any of these could be weaved together even, I'm sure you guys have already thought about that, and I know our campus administrators are very thoughtful about that as well. I just think, especially with everything that the state is mandating as well, we should be really, you know, we should honor our teachers' time and just make sure that they can have that so that all of this can take flight, and they can have adequate time to plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. McMura. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I just had a few questions over the course of the presentation. My first one is on the, and I think we looked at this earlier with Mr. Will Banks's questions, but the kindergarten literacy slide. It's really not about the slide itself, and Mr. Will Banks touched on this, but do we have any data currently that shows the magnitude of difference that pre-K makes on the, this literacy benchmarking that we have? Are we able to sort of ferret out, okay, these folks, these kids that came from pre-K, they scored this way, and the kids who we didn't have for pre-K, they scored another way?
We can do that. We have not done that yet. And what I'm hearing you say is, have we analyzed the data to separate the cohort between students who attended pre-K and those that did not?
Yeah.
We have not, we have not done that yet. But we, that's very easy to do. What we can't necessarily do is say, how did the students perform, how would students perform, like, on Circle and pre-K? How will we project them to perform when they take M-Class? We haven't made that equation.
Sure.
But in terms of separating the cohort, we can do that. We just haven't.
If that's easy to do and it's possible, I would be interested in, in seeing that, because especially as we are moving forward, and in the last year and a half, we've really aggressively expanded pre-K. We were headed that direction until COVID sort of derailed things, but I know something that's on the table in the future is a local, universal pre-K option, and, and especially with our student socioeconomics. You know, that's one of the biggest things we can do to drive student achievement across the board, is starting at that young age for parents who want it. And if we can already see the robustness of, of the pre-K experience in kindergarten literacy levels, I think it's going to help us make the case to the community that this is something that the district's time and resources are well spent on. On the slide, this will be for Dr. Lopez, and this is a this sort of a, on the, you have the breakdown with all of the, all the stuff. I'm just interested in, in Domain 2B, that's our relative performance indicator.
Yes, sir.
And so at the state level, right, this is where the state sort of curves the, the results to account for socioeconomics across districts, right? Because at, at the end of the day, it's really not fair to compare us to, say, a Frisco ISD, and that imperfectly statewide, they try to account for that. When we are doing that for the purposes of the projections you've got here, how do you, how do you account for the relative performance of other districts, given that this is a internal-to-us curriculum assessment?
Okay, so the cut scores for 2B, that's assessment plus CCMR raw average.
Okay.
So regardless of the assessment or the point in time, those cut scores aren't going to change. So even though we don't know how Frisco did on their CA1, and how, it, it doesn't, it, it's not about comparing the assessment at that point in time, those cut scores are set, and so whether it's CA1, CA2, Benchmark, STAR, whatever that average of that approaches meets in Masters, whatever the performance level average is, plus the CCMR percentage, that is going to determine the scaling.
Okay, so the. So I think for the purposes of the, the projections for CA1 that we have here, basically the Domain 2B data is not necessarily coming, something that we've generated. It's something that is sort of an objective thing that's already out there that we plug in.
Well, the cut points are based upon where each of, the cut points are based upon where each of the individual, where, where the economically disadvantaged mark is. So 78.2 has a cut point, 78.1 is a cut point, and it, basically, it's a cut point for, this is where it would be if you fall in the A category, B category, C, D, or F.
Okay.
So basically, what you do is you take that number, you find out where your economically disadvantage is, and that tells you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so even though it's a relative performance indicator, we are not trying to project the relative performance of other districts.
No, it's relative to your economic status.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I might have made that too complicated. Did you have anything else, Mr. Chapa?
And then I guess my last question would be for Dr. Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Yeah, and, and Dr. Brown, we've talked about this. I know there have been presentations on this, but just to, to get a sense of what else is going on, the, the response to data points that you touched on, I would say, for the purposes of this presentation, understandably, are focused on what the response to data is for the adults in the system. And what are some of the things that we're doing response to data for students? What, what sort of interventions are we doing, different supports that we're, we're providing for the students to be able to respond to this data?
Yeah, great question. So as the teachers are working in their teams to disaggregate the data, determine kind of where are the specific areas of opportunity for kids, that's how they're determining who the small group instruction, who those kids are for small group instruction, being very targeted and intentional about that. A lot of our teachers are already offering the additional tutoring, of course, our HB4545. A lot of students are already engaged in that work already as well. And so definitely tutoring supports are being offered to students, small group instruction being offered to students in the classrooms. So those are a couple of things that we are doing at the campus level as relates to instructional supports.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious and getting a sense of what that, that looks like, given that, you know, we've got what the adults are responding to CA1 data with, just an insight into what we're doing with the students. Those are all the, the questions I have. I just wanted to end with a, a comment that I think I touched on, maybe, maybe it was the last meeting time is flying with Dr. Words's last presentation, where you rolled out, you know, what our district improvement plan is and in our approach to rebounding from COVID. And I just want to reiterate again, seeing the CA1 data, just how much I appreciate the thoughtful approach that this district and your staff is taking towards the COVID rebound for us, because it's great to see that there's some areas of the CA1 where we're already, where we hoped to be at the end of this year. There's some areas where we've still got a lot of ground to cover, and I think that that highlights the reasonableness of the approach. I, I know a lot of policymakers out there, and it's in vogue right now, to say we got, we're going to recover from this thing as fast as we can, and, you know, we had a speaker last week said, you know, some, not, not a school in AISD promised that they'd be rebounded a year. And, you know, the, the reality on the ground is, is that this is sort of a historical moment in time that everybody's, you know, responding to, you know, kids and adults. And where we, the goal over five years is to get us back to where we essentially were before COVID, and that is not a small thing, because where we were pre-COVID as a district was actually in a really strong spot. We had just in 2019 coming off of having one of the largest growth rates in the state. We had a huge improvement in our overall score. And if you go back just before that, under the old accountability system, they seem to change every so many years. You know, we had, I think it was the last time we looked at it, almost half the campuses in this district had some sort of academic distinction under the old rating system. So where we were pre-COVID is an aggressive place to get us, I think, to, given everything that's happened and the gaps that we have. We have some third graders, some second graders, that this is really their first time having a normal, semi-normal academic year since they were in kindergarten. And we have so many kids who normally would have had a pre-K3, pre-K4 experience, who didn't have it, and we're seeing the results of that. They're in kindergarten now, and I think that's contributing a great deal to the kindergarten literacy results that we're seeing. And so all of these moving pieces, trying to get that worked out in any, you know, there's an urgency to the work, and we certainly don't want to be complacent, but we also have to be realistic. And I think the path that y'all have put us on, even this first initial CA1 data, I think, proves the, the reasonableness and thoughtfulness of the approach. And I think also sends a message to, to teachers, because you talk to teachers, and I feel like a, a message I hear is they feel so much pressure to, to do everything they can now, that this needs to be accomplished now. And I think the message that the planning, that this being sent from a governance policymaking level is, again, yes, there's urgency to this, but don't beat yourselves up. There is a glide path. There is an approach that we can take that is, is, I wouldn't call it, it, it's aggressive in, in some respects, but it's, it's reasonable, and we've all got a lot to do and a lot of heavy lifting. But I do appreciate that we're not sitting here tonight talking about a two-year plan or a three-year plan. It's a five-year plan, because I really do think that's the timeline that is appropriate for a response to the magnitude of challenge that we're faced with. And I just wanted to thank you again for all the hard work that all of you are putting in to making this, putting this district in a position to strongly but reasonably respond to the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Any other questions and or comments? Okay, once again, thank you, Dr. Wertz, Dr. Lopez, Dr. Brown. Thank you very much for this presentation. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our next discussion item. Dr. Cabasos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring before the board a brief 2021-2022 financial update. And we will be making these type of financial updates with Ms. Moss frequently, because I think it's also important, as we set goals and things like that, that we continue to update the board on our finances and the actions that we're taking relative to our financial state. So, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Cabasos, President Mays' trustees. As Dr. Cabasos said, just a very brief update and kind of a highlight over some of the items that you've already approved tonight. I think it's important that we are transparent to the board, to the community, and our stakeholders on our financial information and position, and just share out periodically where we are with those finances. So I've said in the past to you that sometimes during the year, we're working on actually three fiscal years at one time. That's where we are right now. We're trying to wrap up the 2021 year. We're currently monitoring the budget, as you saw in the budget amendment, for the 2022 year. And we're making plans right now for the 2223 fiscal year. So tonight, I want to highlight just two of those years. I want to talk a little bit about the closing of the 2021 year. You'll hear from our external auditors next month, and they'll share out our audit report and give you the final numbers. Tonight, I'll give you some of those pre-audit estimates and kind of show you where I think we are. Those numbers will change only slightly. So the second piece of it will be just the financial, some of the things that you've looked at tonight. In the future, we hope to bring you, or we will bring you, more than just the general fund. Tonight, we'll focus on the general operating fund. We'll talk about capital fund, capital outlet fund, the debt service fund, food service funds, and then our special revenue funds, which are our ESR funds as well. So these are some of the items you've saw under consent agenda tonight. The two that I will highlight are some that are not as frequent, that you do not see as frequently. The budget amendment, I'll share out a couple of slides that kind of, and point out some things on that for you. And then that special revenue fund balance commitment, that was something that's not routine. It's due to GASB 84, and we just needed to commit that fund balance. So just an overview of what we kind of look at and some of the considerations that we're still looking at. We still look closely at the impact of COVID-19 on our district finances. We monitor the enrollment and the attendance as well. We adopted a revenue budget based on those numbers, so we look at those to make sure that we're still in line with that revenue estimate. The ESR funds, of course, have helped a lot with our COVID-19 impact, as you all know. Another item is our local and state economic conditions. We know that that could impact our district as well. The state's ability, or their inability, to sustain the current level of state funding that we have in place right now. We have to monitor that as well. Senate Bill 1, which passed in our third legislative session, we're looking at that as well. The legislature agreed to permanently increase that mandatory homestead exemption from the $25,000 to $40,000. That has to be approved by the voters, and that will take place in May, so we will continue to look at that. I have no reason to believe that it will not pass. And then, again, we maintain a strong fund balance, so we are, kind of mitigate a little bit of that risk with having that strong fund balance. So just a look really quickly at the 2021 year fund balance. And again, this is just to share out, just as a reminder, the different categories of the fund balance. The non-spendable fund balance is typically your inventory. The restricted fund balance, the legislature has a certain purpose for those funds, such as debt service. It can only be spent to, for debt purposes. The committed fund balance has to be in action by the board. The assigned fund balance does not require an action by the board, and we'll talk a little bit about that and what we've done. And then, of course, the unassigned balance is the balance of those. So on this chart, I wanted to talk about, again, point out that these are pre-audit estimates, and these numbers are subject to change, but we're focusing on the fiscal year that we just closed out in June 2021. Our revenue, our current revenue estimate is 577 million, and our expenditures are 547 million. That's a difference or an excess of 29.7 million. If you'll recall, back in June, we gave you our best estimate of where we thought we might land, and that was right around 33 million. So the other resources here, the, I think we had some struck-off property that we sold for the 34,000, and then our other resources were insurance proceeds. If you recall, the winter storm and then the tornado that we had, we received the items for that. So that resulted in a net change in fund balance of 30.3 million, so we were fairly close on that. But what that does not include is our whole harmless, and we'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide as well. But if that whole harmless had fallen in the 2021 fiscal year versus the 2022 fiscal year, that amount of fund balance would have been a lot greater. The next item is just our proposed transfer to local construction, the 7.8 million that we're moving over to construction for the land sale that hopefully goes through in January of next year. So we land on a total net change in fund balance of 22.5 million. And again, that's a pre-audit estimate. It should be around that amount. It may change slightly between now and the time you get your update. So we're going to build on that number, and that 22.5 that I just referenced there is our estimated change in fund balance. So I want to go back and look at 1920, where we landed. That 222 million is what we had in fund balance, and then we add that 22.5 to it, will give us the 244 million that we're estimating at the end of this year. On, for 1920, if you look at under 3590, the other purposes, we had 2.8 million in encumbrances, and our COVID-19 impact, we assigned dollars there last year, basically because we were, it was unknown whether or not we would receive that whole harmless. So we assigned that last year, and you could tell where in 2021, we took that, we've taken that out now. The other thing that I will point out, under the 2021, the column to your right, that 63.3 million, we've assigned that for this year. That is our 60-day general fund expenditures. Our year ends June 30th, but we have expenditures in July and August. And so our team calculated those amounts, and it's 63 million. And so we wanted to assign that for those purposes. The 60-day special revenue is for our federal funds. We're reimbursed for those dollars. We're still spending money from the previous year, so part of that fund balance is for those amounts. The other item I will point out is, if you'll look at the percentages at the bottom of the chart, in 1920, our general fund unassigned fund balance to total general fund expenditures was 38.29 percent, and that decreased for 2021. And that's basically because we have now assigned part of that fund balance for those purchases that we know we're going to spend out of that fund balance. The bottom line there, the general fund total balance to total general fund expenditures, we were at 43.7 percent, and this year, it's based on the whole total fund balance, we're at 44.74. So we continue to improve on what we put in our fund balance. Now, we're going to shift to 2122, which is the current year. And I just simply want to highlight some of the items that were in the budget amendment tonight. So that 13.9 million increase in general fund balance, it was due to COVID and our whole harmless. The state designated a portion of the district's federal ESR fund allocation for the, for the average daily attendance whole harmless for the 2021 fiscal year. And so that fell in this year, and we are asking, well, we asked you tonight to amend that, the budget for that purpose. The $200,000 increase in general fund under the other revenues portion was just additional general fund insurance recovery that we had to, to transfer out. The 3.6 million increase in Function 11 expenditures includes carryover. You're familiar with that. Typically, this time of year, we bring that budget amendment to you as well. And then just other adjustments and functional changes. The 772,000 increase in Function 31 are ESR adjustments and functional changes as well. So then, the last two slides are just a picture of that budget amendment I wanted to share out. You'll see that 13.9 million there in revenue. The second page, I want to share out where the bottom line is after the, after the budget amendment has been approved. We started out with a $12.9 million deficit, and when we added the proposed amendment, or the amendment that you approved tonight, it's 9.3 million. And so where we stand now is a $3.5 million deficit. And we do expect to see that continue to improve with savings and payroll savings that we have, based on positions that were not filled this year. And that is all that I prepared for you tonight. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss, for that presentation. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Moss, if we can go back to the last slide that you had up. So the question that I had on this slide, we're still looking at a $3.5 million deficit. It's going to improve. My question is, is do we still intend, we had talked a lot in the spring about using ESR funds for enrollment stabilization purposes, because our enrollment was so wonky and thrown off because of COVID. We had lost some funding that we expected to get back. Are we still intending to use ESR funds for stabilization purposes?
Yes, and so you will see that, we talked about the 12.8 million. So you'll see, as we have savings on the ESR side as well, because we have some positions there also, we can use Function 11 expenditures, and that will, again, about $15 million, 15 to 60 million, you'll see added to that.
Okay, so the bottom line is, even, even though we know this 3.5 number is going to change, we're not going to run a deficit this year, because we have stabilization funds set aside to ensure that we run a balanced budget, right?
You are correct.
Okay. That's really the only question I had.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Mays, and thanks for the budget update. And glad to see that we're continuing to grow our fund balance and that we, you know, ended up even better. So, yeah, speaking of that, if you could go back to last year's, the previous year's budget. Whoops.
Did that pass him?
Yeah. So we're adding 22.551, basically, to the fund balance. But if we would add in the hold harmless, really what should be there is another 36 million, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you could also add the 7.8 million that we're transferring out.
And the 7.8. So it was even, you know, compared to what we were projecting, instead of the 33, we're in the 40, whatever, you do the math, you're the accountant. Yeah, much, much better than what we anticipated. And I know, you know, we've been through this before. I know there's a lot of difference between GASB and GAAP, but, you know, the hold harmless was revenue that we received. You say we're going to recognize that in this year's budget, correct?
Yes.
Even though we had expenditures, i.e. the teacher salaries that we're, we're expending to pay for the students that were in attendance, or the teachers we kept on because we're held harmless. And the intent, right, for that money to go to us was announced on May, on May 3 of '21. But, you know, we had, again, it, the way the government changed it, we, they kind of really moved it from to a contribution-type transaction versus an exchange. And so that's why they're, and we didn't actually, it wasn't final until June 30, correct? Or thereabout, right at the end of our fiscal year?
That's correct. It's the timing of the ESR application, and when we actually receive the ESR, the funds for ESR, it's just a timing.
Yeah. It just bugs me that that is money that was clearly for 2021. And I've talked to, and I, you know, several other folks, and a number of charter schools and public schools are doing the same thing, that it, you know, because of the timing, it's rolling over. You know, and the reason why I think, you know, I have one comment. I think that it's clear that that was meant for that time period. And even though it's going to show up in this year's budget, I would really like to see in our MDNA a disclosure on that, so that it's clear to folks that when that shows up, that was money that was really intended for this last year, and just to be fully transparent. Because, you know, we were kind of projecting a deficit, even though it was very conservative. We know we were probably going to make that up, thanks to my colleague, Mr. Chapa, for clarifying that, that, but if we were to, next year, to run a deficit, and then we had that money, you know, let's say that our deficit ended up being 13 million.
Are you talking about the current year or?
No, the current year, I mean, yes, this current year, I'm sorry. With that 14 million, it's going to look like we actually did pretty well. We had a 1 million. And that doesn't give an accurate, transparent reflection of how, and this is, again, hypothetical. We know we're not going to end up with a deficit budget. But I think for that reason, and that, you know, that's why I think it would be possible. I mean, you guys did the right thing. Other districts rolled it in, because it was right at the end of that year. They rolled that revenue into the next year. But I, I really think, and I think most accountants would agree, that full disclosure of that in the MDNA section would be warranted, just so that it's clear to everyone, because I wouldn't want someone to say, hey, we're shifting money, and, you know, things were really good this year, but let's skirt that over. It's clearly because it was right at the end of the year, and it was just a timing thing, right?
Right. And I think Ms. Hammack is still working on the MDNA, so we can certainly insert that in there, if she has not already put that in there. I will say, when we look back on our financials for the last three years, it's just going to be difficult to explain some of the things because of COVID.
Yeah.
And the expenditures, you know, from one year to the next, are going to look, look a little differently. So what we'll do is we'll highlight in our bookkeeping and our records that, you know, COVID, the impact of COVID, so that if there's someone here in five years, and they're looking at our financials and saying, what happened here? That information is there and available. But we can certainly add that to the MDNA.
Okay, thanks. That's all. Great news, though. So, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I guess better safe than sorry. I can't imagine what universe they'd come from if they weren't aware of the changes that everybody has been through. So thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for your questions and discussions to my colleagues, and superior rating for a reason. Thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any speakers requesting?
Yes, ma'am. We have four speakers registered for this portion of the board meeting.
Okay, so before I hand over to those four speakers, I want to say that this second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. And you will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. I will start with Bailey Osborne. Is Bailey present and/or virtual? Okay? Okay. Next on the forum for non-agenda items is Julian Warner.
President Mays, school board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm Julianne Warner. I was a teacher in AISD for 41 years, and I'm now in my seventh year as an AISD substitute. In 1974, I was hired by the superintendent, James Martin, as the very first high school swimming coach. For eight years, I was coach for all four high schools, Arlington, Bowie, Lamar, and Sam Houston. Every year, I would go before the school board and request that swimming pool be built in the district. I ended my coaching career when I became pregnant with my second son. At that school board meeting that year, I said I'd hope that AISD would have a pool available when my son was in high school. Unfortunately, it was not to be. Fifteen years later, my son, Daven, swam on the Martin Swim Team, and AISD still did not have a pool. Once again, I spoke at a board meeting and said I hoped my grandchildren would be able to swim in the AISD pool. Twenty years later, great news. My grandson was able to take swimming lessons in the state-of-the-art AISD nadatorium, thanks to the wonderful citizens of Arlington. Someday, when he is in high school, I hope he will be a swimmer on the swim team. So if the AISD nadatorium exists, why am I here? In March, I began swimming in the training pool at the nadatorium, which is supervised by the City of Arlington Parks and Recreation Department. Unfortunately, last month, they had to eliminate programs in the training pool due to staffing problems. This was a terrible disappointment. They did say they would try to add the site back later. So when speaking...
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Sorry.
Are you almost done, Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and finish.
So when the speaking with several friends who were AISD employees, I thought that for the benefit of AISD employees, the nadatorium could be open at scheduled time for their use. This would be very beneficial to the health and wellness of employees, including substitutes, of course, and I can assure you substitutes would benefit from wellness programs. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Wesley Bullock.
President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and board trustees, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Wes Bullock. I have been nominated by the City of Benbrook to run in the election for a seat on the Board of the Tarrant Appraisal District, and I'm here today to introduce myself to you and to actually ask you to vote for me. I am a proud graduate of the University of Texas at Arlington, and I have spent my entire career at Lockheed Martin. At Lockheed Martin, we have a slogan that we put on the walls, it's called, "We never forget who we work for." And I want to say that, that, that mindset is that we have to keep in mind that people's lives depend on our equipment doing what it's supposed to do, and our stakeholders depend on us. And Tarrant Appraisal District, their stakeholders depend on them, and what I want to do, if I'm elected that board, I'm going to make sure that that district always remembers who they work for. That's you, and that's these children that you represent. And so I ask that, before you cast your vote, to put some thought to it, look at the records, if you can, of the incumbents that are on the board. I'm not an incumbent, I've never ran for this board before, and see who is out there supporting this concept of who works for who versus who is not, and please vote accordingly. If, I would sure appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mark Davis.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I, I just wanted to come here as a resident. Actually, I grew up in Dallas, but, and when I met my wife, I thought she was geographically undesirable because she lived in Arlington. You know, you know how it is, but I would never live there again. My wife is a native of Arlington, Arlington High School graduate, UTA graduate, and we are proudly the parents of a Arlington High School graduate as a class of 21. She was a class president and spoke with you guys there, Lizzie Davis. Anyway, I'm here to implore you to look closely at Mr. Bullock, who is a fellow elder in the congregation with me, and he, he, he is a deep researcher. He gets deep into things, and right now, on the board, we have some people that are, that aren't looking closely at what has been going on and what continues to go on. We have the people that are impatient, want to, just want to get the meeting over with, just let's get going, and, and things apparently are passing through from staff that they're not watching. And one thing that, that we have experienced is that Wes overlooking the way he does in all of our paperwork, he maintains, he makes sure that we never get into legal troubles, that we never are improper in what we do, and, and I really hold up Wes to you as somebody you, you should look at, and, and the Arlington ISD is extremely important because you carry a lot of weight in the whole system, as I know you all know. So I just would appreciate you would look closely at him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to share some brief information about our district and really highlight our students and their, not only their success, but their compassion. First, Arlington High School baseball team showed an abundance of compassion recently when a, the team visited the members of the Saginaw-Boswell baseball team. Two of their players were recently killed, and the Colts wanted to make sure the team was doing all right. The Arlington High players put together gift baskets full of baseball essentials, training supplies, sunflower seeds, et cetera, and made sure that the pioneers had everything they needed. The Colts did a great job of exemplifying our belief in having an engaged community and a compassionate student body. So congratulations, and thank you so much for that from the Arlington High baseball team. Martin High School students also made an impact in the community last week when the school's National Art Honor Society found a way to encourage students at Mansfield Timber View. The students made 1,000 hand-folded cranes in a quilt with encouraging messages and delivered them to the campus. The 1,000 cranes are symbolic of the belief that if one folds 1,000 cranes, their wishes will come true. It wasn't just the National Art Honor Society, the students at Martin that participated, it was the Key Club, Orchestra Honor Society, and others that helped make this. Thank you to the Martin High School students for showing such interest and, and really thoughtfulness. Congratulations to Remensy Elementary and Physical Education teacher Taylor Hoover. The school received $5,000 for its participation in the Fitness All-Stars program that put together a partnership with the Texas Rangers and, of course, Medical City Healthcare. The school is part of the program that promotes healthy lifestyle habits and benefits of staying active. Remensy was eligible for the award because of its participation in the program, and the money won will go to the Physical Education Department at the school. Last, we continue to make progress towards developing our new strategic plan. We brought a new team of members this week for a workshop at our Professional Development Center over two days. This is the create team that was working on the strategic plan that took the work of the design team previously, and we're still on target to bring to the board in December the strategic plan for your consideration. So I'd like to thank them. It was two days of really intense work, and that really, really continues to show the dedication of our staff and our employees, the people involved, even during all these challenging times, to have that future orientation and be very, very mindful of the fact that they're impacting what's going to happen in the next five years in Arlington ISD. So thank you to them, and everyone else will have a chance to participate in committees as well. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any board members with reports? Yes, Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Just briefly, I, I had the opportunity last week, I was invited to read to the kindergarten class at Crow Leadership Academy. Just wanted to say thank you again to them. It was my first time to read in person at an elementary school since COVID started, and, and it was something I really enjoyed pre-COVID, and it was great to be back on campus and read. Really appreciate the invitation. The kindergartners were extremely well-behaved, much more well-behaved than, than adults that I've seen lately. And I also just wanted to comment on, on the progress of the, the bond work that has been done there. I went to Crow from kindergarten through, just before fourth grade, and just as I moved, they were expanding Crow then, and so they expanded Crow again. I got to go on a tour of the new wing, got to see the new cafeteria project, and really expanded the capacity of the cafeteria. They have two serving lines now, but the, I was really impressed with the expansion and the new gym. The gym roof is not so low that you can't shoot a basketball.
Right.
And the kindergarten and pre-K classrooms are fully outfitted, fully functioning, and have restrooms, which all of the teachers were very grateful for. So just wanted to report on that because it was a special occasion for me being back, doing those special events in person that we used to enjoy doing, and getting back to that sense of, as Mr. Will Banks put it earlier, normalcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Any other board reports? Well, just based on what we've heard from our board report...
It's for the secretary.
Oh, yes, Mrs. Fowler.
It's for the secretary.
Oh, I'll call on you. Okay, so I just wanted to briefly say, based on everything that we've heard this evening, what an amazing opportunity from our community, to our students, to our parents, to our financial department, to our directors, to all the support out there for our teachers. Leads me to just say that success is not final, failure is not fatal, it is the courage to continue that counts, and I love watching this district continue to do what it has done in the past, and that is educate our students so they can be successful. So with that being said, Mrs. Secretary, do we have anything to report?
Madam President, I do. Mr. Chapa requests to see improvement for kids with pre-K compared to those without pre-K, non-pre-K.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much. At this time, it is, oh my gosh, I have sleepy, tired eyes. It is 9:27 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.